All right, I think we're on and on. Good morning, everyone, and happy new year to everyone. And welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors, Monday, January 4th of 2021. And with us today, we have Kelly from our local newspaper. We have Teresa from our local radio station. That's all I see for outsiders. Is that correct? And we have Luanne, our executive assistants in the background. Lisa, our Jackson County auditor. Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, and myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. And first on our agenda is David, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning and happy new year, David.
Thank you. We have three items today. Item number one is rock bids and commission to send those documents out to the local suppliers. Begin that discussion.
A motion and a second to send out the sheets for bids. Is that correct? Yeah, we don't have any bids back. Motion and a second to send out these sheets for the bids for rock. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
And we've got two final vouchers for payments to contractors. The first one is a concrete box culvert that was done in bundle with some projects from Scott County. That's why this on the form here, Scott County engineer. The voucher total for this project, project 78 is $8,244.15. Total project was $274,804. For the chairman to sign off on. And then the final project is a bridge replacement over the Mill Creek. Mill Creek Road Bridge. Total project was $317,591. This voucher is for $9,527 to Jim Schrader Construction out of Belle. So both these are the finals and then I doubt we'll release those projects that they're funded out of their, their funds.
Motion to approve.
Can we do them both together? I have a motion and a second to approve the final vouchers for the High Bridge Road and the Mill Creek Road Bridge. The High Bridge Road is a box culvert and the Mill Creek Road Bridge is bridge replacement as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Yeah, that's over. It seems fairly reasonable for the amount of work that was done out there. What under destruction and that whole valley was dug out and I mean it was a huge project.
It looks, looks really nice too.
It's good. I mean, I don't know what a bridge was awesome, but I'm sure it would've been more than that.
Well, the bridge was, you know. A hundred thousand, well, $50,000 more here, but culverts are easier to maintain and last longer.
So how was your first taste of 11 inches of snow?
It was fun. Kid to clean out the driveway and.
Thank God they were here, huh?
Yeah, exactly. Realize that if I get any more snow than that, I'm crying, I can get the van through it, so.
Now, that's a test and it was, it was heavy. It was wet underneath them.
I think they said on the news, that's half of what we got last year altogether.
Oh, really?
In one storm.
Yeah, I had a good, I had a good 12 and I had six of the ones before that, so I got to hit them both. So, no, actually I was over west or over western county too and the roads look good over there too. I was over there the other day.
Any other questions? See you with your budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, David. Are there any visitors or any other citizens on the meeting with me, join the meeting today that would have anything like to say or comment on? I don't see anyone. Lisa, are you, Sarah is on the agenda, but we've got a few minutes. You got, are you available, Lisa?
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December 29th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspaper.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the December 29th, 2020 board proceedings as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of claims listing in the amount of $91,836.97.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the auditor's office to issue warrants and claims as published claims listing in the amount of $91,837.97. Any further discussion?
Just keep it about there. Yeah, that would be nice. That just is wonderful.
Keep it there. That would be kind of refreshing.
Yeah.
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 I had questioned the dental expenses. I know we talked to Kerry dental and medical expenses for the, for our inmates. I know we talked to Kerry about it, so hopefully we can move forward with that a little bit too. That was. Interesting.
It's just gets, it's unbelievable.
I don't know how long these inmates are in there, whether they, what the case of history behind it is, but yeah, for a dental visit for that kind of money is.
Those two dental visits and six inmates that went to the doctor.
Medication.
I don't know. I mean, we've just paid the provider directly. It wasn't for prescription.
Right. Okay, well, we need to check with our, we'll have our new sheriff check into that.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we'll be visiting with friends.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
And Iowa law says that in order to call a special election, you have to give a 46-day notice. A 46-day notice would be next week when it comes in reference to the jail bond election. So today we need discussion of possible motion on resolution number 782-0-4-2021 calling for a special election on March 2nd, 2021 for a bond vote not to exceed 5.9 million for a new Jackson County Sheriff's Office and Jail as recorded in resolution book four, page 312.
So moved.
Would you repeat the number? I think you left the one off.
She did.
It's all one.
I would second that. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 782-01-04-2021 on the bond vote not to exceed $5.9 million for new Jackson County Sheriff's Office and jail as recorded.
We're told we're supposed to call it.
A law enforcement center.
This came from bond counsel, so that's why we're.
All those in favor say aye.
We're doing as they told us.
Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Discussion of possible motion to approve the chair's signature on resolution to be filed with bond counsel Aylerson Cooney calling for a special county election to authorize the county to design, build, equip, furnish, and making land site improvements for a new Jackson County Sheriff's Office and Jail and issue general obligation capital loan notes not to exceed 5.9 million for these purposes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to have the chair's signature on the resolution. That's the resolution that we just approved?
Yes.
Okay, to be filed with bond counsel Aylerson Cooney calling for a special county election to authorize the county to design, build, and equip, furnish, and make land sites improvements for new Jackson County Sheriff's Office as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Discussion of possible motion to public notice, to publish notice of proposal of Jackson County Iowa to issue not to exceed 5.9 million general obligation capital loan notes in the county's three official newspapers.
So moved.
Second. Motion second to approve the public notice of proposal of Jackson County. Iowa to issue not to exceed 5.9 million general obligation capital loan notes as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
And that's just paperwork that we need to send back to them so they know that we're showing you.
Got your ducks in a row then.
Everything's lined up. We're ready to go.
Yeah.
And that's all that I have for the board today.
We will move forward as we can and. Why not anyway? Sarah.
Sarah. Are you ready? You can do it if you want.
That's what I thought.
Okay, thanks. I didn't, I wasn't expecting you.
Yeah, I mean Sarah.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, what, what did she say? Okay. And we'll just wait a minute, but there's no need to recess, I don't believe. Anyone else have any questions or concerns? They did set things come back a couple of days. That was, that was quite a snow.
We were open. People, people had.
Yeah, well.
Asked me if we were going to close and I said, no, it's the end of the year.
I was gonna call and I thought, you know what? I just leave the sleeping dog lie, right?
I had no intention of closing because it was the end of the year and with it being snowing and such, I knew that there was going to be people coming in for snowmobile licenses and ATVs and car licenses and so.
I did stop on Thursday. Someone was trying to get in to see Beth.
Thursday?
Yeah, the transfer of car license. They're not there today.
Yeah.
Holidays tomorrow, I says.
And what's that, Sarah?
I can let you in, but there ain't nobody in there, so I don't. Oh, Sarah is on with us. Good morning, Sarah, and happy new year.
Good morning and happy new year.
And also we have Beth Yerlar, our Jackson County treasure with us today.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Beth.
And you have some discussion on a, action on a petition?
Correct. I, I had, I sent all the information to Luanne, so hopefully she passed it on to you. The city of Makoka did this earlier this year where they had a property they felt was abandoned and they used 657A to get title to the property. So this for 14, I think it's North Niagara is the same situation. It's a property they feel is abandoned and they want to get titled to it so they can rehab the property. I talked with Beth and there was actually a tax certificate holder who had paid, I think, $1,646, which was repaid to that person per the code. And so the question is whether or not we are willing to simply disclaim any interest we have in the property due to the property tax. The one thing that I talked about about was, you know, this is a city property, so the majority of the taxes are not coming to the county. So that, that 1,600, it's mostly going to be city taxes that the city's not going to get versus us having to eat that 1600.
The breakdown too, Sarah, if they're interested in that.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
How does that work? I thought if you were paying the taxes and it came to a sale, that person would take title to the property.
Not for a year.
Yeah, one year, nine months and 90 days from the date of the sale.
Oh.
If the taxes aren't paid, then they can pay. And this would have been a 2019 sale, 2018 sale?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, well, we didn't have a 20 sale, so.
So they are getting possession or is the city?
They never serve the 90-day notice, so they have to, they have one year and nine months from the date of the sale. And then after that passes, then they have to serve a 90-day notice to us, me specifically, and anybody who has an interest in the property saying if the taxes aren't paid in 90 days, then they will be able to take deed. And that wasn't touched.
So who reimbursed the tax certificate holder?
What was that?
Who reimburses the tax certificate holder?
I did that.
Okay.
So.
With the one and a half percent a month?
No, they don't get their interest. So they're out, they're out the interest because they would only get the interest if the taxes were paid. And the taxes weren't paid. So basically what I did is just reversed everything that happened and gave them what they paid us back, but without interest. So that amounted to $1,646. And of that, so $1,253 of it would have been taxes from prior years, not current taxes. And of that, there was 49309 was Makoka City. 47182 was Makoka Community Schools. And then it goes down from their general basic fund, which would be us. 12576 supplemental fund, 3109 Pioneer Cemetery got $1.71. MHDD is 1854, 10 cents to tuberculosis, brucellosis.
So basically we had a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, the little ones, yeah, there's assessor was $25, hospital 35, county ag 791. Community colleges got 30 bucks. So that was just of the old taxes. And then I also had to void out the current tax year payment because they had paid first half already and that was $319. So that was, and their $20 certificate fee. So that all adds up to the 1600.
So the certificate holder paid the half.
The certificate holder paid the first half taxes. They can start that November 15th, I think.
Well, the property is no value to us, correct? I mean, it's dilapidated.
Yeah, you can see the picture.
Yeah, I looked at it.
Pretty.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be good to get it off the tash roll and maybe, yeah, if it's torn down, disposed of and something new goes up there would be great.
So at this point, what I've done is just reversed everything that the tax sales certificate holder paid. Send them a check back for the $1,646. And now in my system, all those taxes that I reversed are just showing due again. So I would have to get approval. I think that's what you're asking for now, Sarah, is approval for me to abate or dust all those taxes to zero, right?
So essentially the way the code lays this out is that if we file a disclaimer of interest saying we're not going after the property for what is owed to us, then that speeds up the process for the city to get their court order getting their title. Once they get that court order, that's what basically abates all, any and all claims. So that court order would be what would allow you to then zero it out. And I'll make sure I get it to you this time.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically this 657A petition says just exactly what you said. Give me the correct wording for that.
So the city is trying to take title to this abandoned property. And one of the things they have to do is serve notice to anyone who might have any lien on the property. Because there's taxes owing, we have a lien on the property.
So.
So we disclaim that.
Correct word is disclaimer of.
Disclaimer of interest and consent to, to the order allowing the city to take title.
Oh, yeah, there's.
So from here, the, does the city put it out for sale or do they go in and?
Well, once they own it, they can do what they want with it, but my understanding is that because they've got that other property, I think Circle Drive also. But their plan is to sell it to somebody that will rehab the property. I don't know that they're wanting to tear anything down. I think they're trying to find a buyer that will take it over and and rehab it. And since they didn't pay anything other than whatever taxes they lost, I'm guessing they're, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna, you know, charge too much for it.
Well, it's hard to find a buyer with a, with a lien on it. So yeah, if we get rid of that. Makes it look a little more attractive to some potential.
Well, you know, ECIA is doing that down in Clinton, taking and rehabbing houses. I think they're going to start their third one.
Is that humanity project?
No.
No? Okay, so with that being said, I'm looking for a motion for a disclaimer of interest and a consent to the order to the city.
Now make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to file a disclaimer of interest and consent to the, of order to the city to proceed as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
I'll get that on file.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yep.
I think it's important that we move forward with some of these operated properties and like I said last week, I went down, looked at that one and green haven that, so we will. When we have the correct personnel in place, we'll have to move forward with that also.
Yeah.
Rich, you mean? Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good day.
Have a good, happy new year, Beth.
And we're way down the line to Luanne. Are you prepared for this? Like you've got a lot of stuff going on here.
It's been one big day of the year.
You get all your glory. Good morning and happy new year.
Happy new year. All right, we will start with the calendar. At 1:00 this afternoon, Jack has called with the attorney for the Mississippi Valley Workforce Appeal. At tomorrow morning, Tuesday, January 5th at 10:00 a.m. He has an entrance conference with the workforce by Zoom. And at 1:30, he has a CEO's special meeting by Zoom for the workforce. 6 o'clock tomorrow night is the conference board meeting for all of you and it is going to be operated only by Zoom. So weather is not a factor. You should be able to get in. Wednesday, January 6th at 6:00 p.m. is a 911 service board meeting for Mike. Friday, January 8th at 10:00 a.m. is seven judicial department corrections in Davenport for Larry. At noon is a Iowa workforce leadership office hours meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at 2:00 Friday afternoon is Mississippi Valley Workforce Monitoring Exit Conference by Zoom also for Jack. Monday, January 11th at 7:30 a.m. is an early childhood Iowa executive board meeting by Zoom for Jack. At 9:00 a.m. I'm not sure what we're going to do with that meeting. January 12th, Jack has an all-day appeal hearing with Mississippi Valley Workforce. We're not sure yet when he needs to be in that meeting. He might find out at 1:00, but we kind of need to decide or have a special meeting to set the meeting differently. If we don't do it today, we're going to have to have a special meeting to change the date. The appeal runs all day on Tuesday. We don't know when Jack's going to have to be in the hearing for that. Or if he's going to have to be in there more than once. So that's why this is kind of marked as tentative.
Miranda did say at our meeting we had last week that I should find out this afternoon because they're going to give us a window of time that we have to be available.
So is that a two-hour window or a six-hour window?
She didn't say.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah.
So I don't know if we need to try and set a special meeting for later in this week to determine that or?
Well, it depends what the time is. And even if it isn't at the same time, it might not. I mean, if you had to step out at this point in time from this meeting, that would be all right too.
Well, we don't know how long, I guess, but yeah, we could take a recess. I don't have an issue with that, but.
Or we could do that recess for two or three hours if we had to.
I hope I don't.
You're gonna buy us lunch. It's okay with us.
Have a agenda for next week so far. It's just David, myself and Luanne, so it's not, I mean, we could have a very short meeting.
And, yeah, is it a case, we could tentatively set some budget. Even go over some of our budget stuff if we have time.
From here on out, budget work sessions are what you guys want. Pick your days because it's just for you to discuss budget. Because all the departments have presented now except for.
They have?
All the departments have presented except for Becky and except for Lisa.
And David.
Next door. Yes, who's coming back? Yes, and today.
And then Brent.
And Brent. Yeah, so we don't know when we're going to do that, but those are the few departments we still have to present.
And I do know that Brent, when I talked to him this weekend, he might want us to have a special meeting this week for him.
Yeah, we'll have to have notice, but yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, as long as we get 24 hours notice. We can do that, so.
What does the week bring?
So I don't, I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, and maybe we can't, I mean, we don't have enough information maybe until after.
Okay, so on that Tuesday.
On that Tuesday, all I have for sure is early, well, we would do that meeting at 9:00.
So when is it, when is Jack supposedly supposed to start this or when is tentatively? No?
On Tuesday, the 12th, the hearing that he's testifying in starts at 9:00 and runs all day.
Okay, well, let's do this. If you guys, okay, let's start at 8:30 or, are you okay with that?
Yeah. I was in the parking lot 15 minutes ahead.
But then you left. And that, is that okay with you, Jack? Or, I mean, you got a full day there maybe or?
I, that's, that's not a problem.
Bring your sack once.
I'm not worried about one.
Wrong way. Okay, well, if that works, we can tentatively set our meeting or we can set our meeting for 8:30 and if we have to take a recess, we'll do that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And then we can, I guess we can tentatively set a budget work session sometime in that morning sometime.
Right, just for, for you, yes.
Yeah, for us, but the public needs to know it, correct? I mean.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda. Yes.
Okay. Works for me.
Okay. At 4:00 p.m. that afternoon on Tuesday, the 12th, is a Makoka River Watershed Management Authority meeting by Zoom for Larry. First day of the calendar year, we have, we just take care of. First order of business is discussion, possible action on board chair and vice chair.
So vice chair move up.
Oh, I think that's, that's pretty normal, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would need a motion from you to do that, correct?
Make a motion that Jack moves the chair and that would move me to vice chair.
And I would second the motion.
Can I do that?
Can you do that? Or do you need me to do that?
I'll let you do it.
I'll second the motion. So I have a motion and a second to approve Jack as being our chair and Larry as the vice chair. And I want to thank everybody in my last two years of being the chair, so being so considerate. To me and my shortfalls, so.
Well, I would have to say, Mike, you've done a very commendable job. I think that in my 30 years, I started my 31st year this year and you've been as good as any chair I've ever seen.
Well, I sure appreciate that, but it does take patience from fellow board members and from Team Jackson County. It's, 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 it's easy to work when you got a team to work with, so appreciate it.
It's, you know what? I, I speak about Team Jackson County all the time and that's how we get things done. We start working together and we start thinking together and.
It's easier.
Get a lot of stuff done when we do that.
It's much easier to get things.
I can think of only one time and that was when he was playing with his candy.
Kathy just don't open this. Just so he doesn't steal yours.
I guess something you were trying to open and it was coming over.
What is that noise? That's a candy bar. Well, thank you very much and we'll look forward to moving forward and again, working as a team going forward. Okay.
Okay. Have you voted on?
I said, I had a. I said, I had a motion and a second. Did we vote? All in favor? Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried. I think we, I'm not sure. Now we got that.
Side tracked there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, official 2021 newspapers for the county. Macau, Bellevue, and Preston have all requested to be recognized as official newspapers for 2021.
And that's what we have to have this three, so.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve Macau, Bellevue, and Preston newspapers designated official 2021 newspapers of Jackson County. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Alright. I get a motion on an appointment of one of you to the Seventh Judicial Department of Corrections Board, and Larry has been on that. Looking for motion, I guess, to reappoint Larry if that's what you want to do.
So moved. Are you okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
I would second that. So all those in favor of appointing Larry to the Seventh Judicial Board, say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried. I got a question. Do now I relate just the rest of this meeting to Jack, or do I finish?
I would say you continue through this meeting.
Okay, I just, yeah, I know we both.
Change that.
So the, the motion was effective January 12th. Vice and the chair and the vice chair. Right?
Pardon?
If, that you become, become the chair and the vice chair the next meeting, does that suffice, or is that?
I, I just think that you started this meeting, you finished.
We'll do that. Any discrepancies, call me.
Alright, I am also looking for a motion to appoint two supervisor representatives to the Jackson County Economic Alliance Board for when your term. Jack Willie and Ryan Kilburg are the two on there now, and they have agreed to be reappointed. So promotion to reappoint them.
So moved. Second, I would, we have a motion and a second to approve Jack Willie and Ryan Kilburg to be the representatives on the Jackson County Economic Alliance Committee. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Okay, also looking to see if there are any changes that you want to your committee and board assignments. That list is in your binder. You know which boards you're on, so.
So I would also say I've been attending the last couple EMS advisory board meetings, so I don't know if we need to have somebody on that board, or just just take a note that when they're having a meetings, if somebody wants to sit in on them.
Do they even have any bylaws?
They are.
Working on those.
Working on the bylaws, and the next meeting they're voting on officials, president, vice president. I think they're only going to have three officials at this time.
I guess my question is, when we look at these miscellaneous boards and commissions, are some of those supposed to be the board chair? I know there's two of them that, that point out that they're the board chair, but I was surprised when I really looked at this, that that line, other than two, it's all Larry, or all Mike. ATV, Bellevue, Hometown Pride, Emergency.
Hometown Pride, Bellevue Hometown Pride makes sense to me. I don't mind ATV commission unless you want to do that.
Well, since I've never been on an ATV, I think probably if you were, we stayed on that, but I didn't, I didn't know about those.
I, I would probably say that, that the tag authority group of that might revert to you. Is that correct or no? I guess I don't know how that come about. That's new.
You may have to look at tag, see what they're, I will say about it.
But other than that, the, the top, the top list, I'm fine with what I represent now.
I, I'm fine with what I'm representing. I, you know, my question is, I think, Jack, you get to brought a lot of this with the workforce development. I mean, I know it was some trying times in the mental, the mental health board also. I mean, they went to some governing board and, and appreciate the time and effort that you put in on that, that's.
It's just that there's so much going on right now.
Yeah, well, that's what I meant, you know, you went through a lot of difference. Yeah. That was kind of my point. Like, I'd have to sit there for several months and go, alright, what are we talking about?
I think we can change appointments to those boards anytime we need to, but this is traditionally the day we look at it and, and decide if something we needed to change or not. So if there's not, that's usually the way it works. We don't usually change anything unless.
I would move that we keep the list of board committee appointments the same as the current year.
I would second that with the note that Operation New View is no longer.
Right.
Right, yeah, that's last year's list.
And do we want to put the advisory board on that list or no? I just have it.
I think it should be.
It can be on there.
Okay, and then are you getting emails from Mr. Storm? From Bellevue? So when them meetings are, you're getting notice of that?
They're coming, yes, they're going through.
Okay. I know he sends them to me and I just, yeah. So we can touch base with him and, I mean, I, I don't know if it's a thing, do we ask the advisory board if they want us to be a part of that? I, I think they do, but that's, I don't know.
Making down to the bylaws.
Yeah, yeah, and I guess anybody can attend, it's a public meeting, so. I, I think it's one of them meetings that we should sit in on. Somebody should sit down on just to listen what's going on and what's, what's the county thinking basically as a EMS, the whole system, you know?
You know, if they pass along with the.
The what?
He's carrying a little cup like this ice. Thinking, or salt for the ice.
So if EMS gets right to levy, that would require one of us to be on that board.
Probably, but that's, that's still, that to be seen what happens on the state level.
Yeah.
That could all change, yeah, but I think in, in the process, I know they just had one last week and they discussed the, the my laws and the officers, so. I think it's good just to sit on this here.
So have they ever really sat down and if they could get what they wanted, how much would that be?
For levy?
Yeah.
I, I have, I don't think it's ever been.
What would their budget be? I guess that'd be something to bring up at a meeting and just kind of get people thinking about.
The EMS budget? Well, we know what it is because Ryan presented it last week.
Oh, okay, what he's doing.
What?
Wasn't it around $70,000?
Yeah, yeah, but I think what they're proposing is have an EMS essential service, so basically you'd be paying each service X amount of dollars, and I don't know what you base that on. I think you base that on calls, you base that on personnel, I don't know. There's a lot of discussion there.
Yeah, that's what, just something to get started and.
It would certainly be a plus if they would make it an essential service, because it is really.
Be good for legislators to know.
Yes.
What, you know, this is, yeah, we need to make this levy for EMS, and if they ask, well, how much is it? We're just like, they really need to know a number.
Yeah, some, I mean, there was an article going to TH yesterday about these smaller communities. It's tough, it's tough, and the call went out the other day out there, but somebody was slave riding with a broken leg and they had tough kids, people to respond to, and it's.
Yeah, they're looking for somebody with a rope.
Holidays, yeah.
Try to get them back up on and they're wearing.
Basket, yeah. Anyway, so we do have a motion and a second to.
Under the agencies on the bottom, you need to add human service guns.
Yes, you just, yeah, okay.
Other than that, everything's the same.
I'll update all of it.
I know you will.
For 2021, so.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the supervisors committees and board assignments as presented with the changes noted. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Wait a minute.
You got more for me?
Okay, you got, make sure you got a couple things here. Yeah, we got the board meeting that done. Okay, good.
You are relieved of your duties.
Okay, so.
You want to see the budget schedule?
No, is it Becky's schedule today?
Yeah.
She is not until 10:20.
Isn't Becky scheduled for the regular meeting?
Yeah, she is. At 10:20.
She has, yeah, she is.
No, isn't she supposed to come in for the regular meeting?
Yes, she is.
Ryan says.
And if she had time, she could come in now and then come in again later, but that's.
But he's on.
Hey, checking in, I'm here.
Yeah.
I made a point to be early today.
No, we're fine with that. Well, you get stuck in traffic.
What's that?
Yeah, we don't want you to get stuck in traffic.
We're going to wait till Sarah gets on because she's going to want to be on the phone call with us, Ryan.
Okay, and Sarah is our county attorney, by the way.
Okay.
There she is.
Yeah.
She's right beside you.
So, um, I, I don't know how familiar you are with everyone here. I just look at mine and, and I'm Mike Steinis, I'm one of the board members. And Jack Willie and Larry, yeah, Jackson, Larry's board member. And Sarah is our county attorney. Lisa, she's under Jackson County right there. She's our county auditor. Came accused the local radio station. Kelly Gerlock is our local newspaper representative. Luann is our executive assistant. Jeannie is there, is listed, she's in the auditors office, and so is Jess, so they're very interested in. Assessor's office, so what did I say? Auditors. She's across the hall from the auditor's office. So Jeannie and Jess that are on there, I don't know who's along with them, but they're from the auditor's office, and interesting in your proposal here.
Do I need, Lisa, do I need to wait till 9:50, or can I go?
You can go.
Okay, um, I'm going to present here, assuming that no one saw my presentation a couple weeks ago. So I'll just, I'll kind of speak freely. So the, the agreements that the board has in front of them is an agreement that would be GS consulting, for lack of a better term. Pretty much what, what came about was multiple emails, multiple communications of just GIS related items that were needed to be done for Jackson County. I can't say the words specifically, sorry, I'm stuttering. The, the 911 item, which was making sure that the 911 items were, were up to par with state standards. Fast forwarding to 2021, that's where Schneider comes in. Schneider does this for other, we do this for about 10 to 15 other counties in the state of Iowa alone, where we serve as your GIS coordinator. So what that means is anything from making a map for a specific department to training someone in the assessor's office or auditor's office related to a parcel split or combine, or more specifically the 911 item. So I, I presented a couple ideas to the board and to Lisa a couple weeks ago. One was more of a full, call it more of a longer-term GIS consulting. And it sounded like this might be a better option, which is a shorter-term agreement, which is for three months, and it's up to a specific amount of consulting hours. So once, so those hours will be used, it's 48 hours, and those will be used between the time of signing, I put January 11th on there, but pretty much the time of signing to March 31st. And then whichever comes first, March 31st, or when those hours get used up, I will come back to the board and just, I'll give a, a report, so to speak, on, you know, here's what we found and here's, and I'll actually break down how those hours were used. I know, we already mentioned a couple times, I'll mention it one more time. You know, where this conversation really got going was the, the 911 project and making sure that everything related to GIS and 911 is up to the state standards. So that will be one of our priorities. But I was, along the way, though, there will be other things that will come up. We don't know what those are going to be, but those can be taken care of with this agreement. The beauty of this agreement is the flexibility. It can be used for anything from, like I said, making a simple map to just doing some basic training, or more specifically with Jackson County. You had talked about hiring GIS personnel, and that's also with planning and zoning. I don't know if that's still on the, I'm looking in Lisa's direction. I don't, Lisa, you can't tell that I'm looking at you. But I, I guess I'm getting is, if there's any kind of transition of employees, that's also, you know, is part of that service of, you know, training that new person on anything that you know specifically related to Jackson County GIS. How's that, Lisa? Good?
I think that's good.
Can you guys hear me okay?
You don't know what the potential hours would be to get 911 up to apply.
I, great question. I pressed, impressed our project manager, and it's not fair to him, and it's not fair to you guys to say, oh, it's going to be 20 hours, or whatever it's going to be. We just, we don't know. His answer was, we just don't know until we start looking at the data. But what I can tell you is, he will be able to know within the first hour or so of looking at that data. So as soon as I know, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not going to wait until March 31st to be like, oh, hey, by the way, we didn't get done. It's something that I will be able to tell the, report to the board and Lisa within the first week or two of the project.
I would hate to spend all 48 hours of this contract for 911 purposes. That's my only.
I, I anticipate we won't, Lisa, but it's like the one time I say that, that would be the one time. Yeah. That happens. So I, like I said, just to be fair to everyone, I, I, I don't want to set up unrealistic expectations, but, but like I said, I can assure you though, and you guys do meet weekly, correct?
Yes.
So this is something that, as soon as I know, I will request to get back on the agenda and just give you a quick, a quick five-minute update.
And again, Ryan, we don't have to wait to our weekly meetings. We can call a special meeting if we have to, or you can relay information to Lisa and/or whatever it may be, human resources, zoning, whatever it may be at any given time, and yeah, we can get that information.
Well, that's, okay, well, let me amend that then, Mike. As soon as I hear anything, I'll make sure our project manager, me personally, reaches out to Lisa, and then whatever Lisa wants to do with that information.
So this number that I'm looking at in item two here, is that monthly?
That is a lump sum.
That's for the whole three months.
Okay, so if we need some added training in this time, could we be adding some hours if it works out for both sides?
Oh, of course.
That's why I didn't want to use all 48 hours, sure, sure. For 911, I was kind of hoping to use some of those hours for training purposes.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're in the process of, you know, potentially hiring new zoning administrators, so we don't know how that's going to work if, if we can need some extra training or not. I guess we're not sure until we fulfill that position.
I, well, I think that actually is, that's kind of actually the argument why I decided to do this amount. I didn't want to need 80 hours, and then we have trouble filling those 80 hours. This way, this is a good.
Have the hours be somewhat flexible so that we can utilize some of the training hours as well, and if we need to extend those hours, I think that we're willing to do that.
Yep.
So is it an hourly rate? Is it based on an hourly rate, Ryan, or?
Yes, sir. 135 an hour. Let me make sure my math is right.
Yeah.
Let me make sure my math is right.
You're, you are correct, Ryan.
Okay.
Yeah. Sarah, do you have any problems with the contract itself?
The only thing that I saw is that, I'm guessing that this is some standard language you use in a lot of your contracts. The renewal section in paragraph four, since this is just kind of a short-term thing, my concern is that it talks about automatically renewing for a year, which obviously we're not even doing a first year the first time around. So I'm not sure if we could take that part out.
I'm looking at the room here, where is that? Is that?
They give you free HBO if you don't.
We want to make sure what, should we want to. You want to make sure of what, should we want to discontinue this? What is our timeframe to do it, if we don't need your services past March thirty-first?
And this technically expires on March thirty-first.
Okay.
Meaning, it's a I've got the lawyer here on the line, I'm trying to think of a more legal term, but it's, it's use it or lose it.
That's fine, that just means that we don't.
So we have, we have to use that amount of hours.
And we will make sure to help you use the, I mean, we're not gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
I just didn't want to have to put a pop-up on my calendar for February first or March first that I needed to get a thirty or sixty-day notice.
No, and like I said, that's, I mean, I, I said to Jesse earlier, that's my job to, to call you and be like, hey, do you need more hours? So that was, I mean, and that's what we talked about earlier, like, we, I presented that six-month option as well, but this seemed to be a better option for Jackson County, just with everything going on. This allows you to get a bunch of quick fixes done, also do some training, and then allow you, the board and everyone, to take a deep breath, evaluate, and then decide what you want to do next.
Well, yeah, it's not like we don't have an acquaintance with each other, where we already have a contract in place for some things, correct?
Yeah.
So it's, it's not like it's gonna be new to us, or you guys are new to us, or, you know. You have a working, we have a working relationship already, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, so.
I want to, I want to point out a number four to Sarah. In the wording, if I'm looking at this right, it says, if the services provided are for an annual rate, which they're not, professional will prorate the first year, try to think, for, and following the consecutive, so it's saying, I want to make sure that I know the way it's written, it's so that it will work for both types of agreements, the annual renewal agreements, and then also a, a one-time fee in this case. I want to make sure that you saw that and you're okay with that.
Well, I did see that, it wasn't completely clear that it only applied to the one year, I mean, that's certainly how it's written, but I wanted to make sure that everyone knew, and then we're all on the same page, that this is certainly not an automatic renewal. If we need to, we can renegotiate another contract.
I think certainly three months gives us time for both sides to analyze, yeah, this was a potential real benefit to us, or, you know, was not a benefit to us, you know, that's, that's what I'm thinking, that'll give us time to for this, for that amount of money, yeah, we're not, I think that's a service that we need at this point.
I guess Buck or Jess, are there any questions that you have?
They don't have, he's hollering through the wall again, they don't have microphones on.
I, I will wait. If they need to physically get up and move to the other.
I really hear no pounding on the wall, so.
Apparently, there's no pounding on the wall, so that must mean they don't.
Wait a minute, he's pounding on the wall.
Now we can hear him talking, but we can't hear what they're saying.
They're talking loudly.
I'll, Lisa, I'll, I'll wait.
Just wait just a second, Ryan.
The other thing I forgot to mention, that I think I mentioned earlier, is too specific to nine one one, is the person that will be leading this project, Jeff Lewis, is actually on a board with the Iowa State nine one one.
I didn't hear what your question was.
If you had any questions for Ryan.
Well, Jess was watching too, and she was taking, she missed what you said, so.
Oh, we were just asking if you or Jess or anyone from the office had any questions.
I did at this time, but Jess was probably making notes.
One knock is, one knock is no, two knocks is.
Pay attention to each other, I didn't even know you, as it said something, I got into
Yeah.
doing something else, and I wasn't paying attention.
No, you can go back and see if she's got questions.
She has anything, but I don't have any questions.
Jess, it says in the chat, Jess, to everyone, no questions.
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you, Jess.
Give you an opportunity.
Mike, can they see me?
Yep.
Hi, staff.
Yeah.
Don't be booping off over there.
Would you just go back and repeat what you just said about your, the project manager with the Jeff Lewis wife?
Yeah, I, I really, I really want to point that out. Jeff Lewis, who will be the lead project manager on Jackson County, serves on, I, I'm gonna botch the official name, but he serves on the board that related to the nine one one committees and every. I, I want to make sure, well, here, let me, let me paraphrase, he's very involved with Iowa nine one one.
Okay.
That's what you need to know. I, I don't want to misspeak, so I'll just say that he's very involved with the Iowa nine one one project.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we certainly hope that the services for both sides work out to the best, and I guess we'll, we'll know in a, in a couple of months, so.
Hopefully sooner.
Yeah.
I think it'll be great.
Well, we sure appreciate, appreciate you being on with us and having the time for us today, Ryan, and and hopefully you'll have contact here with our staff and move forward.
May I ask, will there be a motion today on it, or is there any?
I believe so.
All right, that's the best part for me, okay. All right, do I need to stay on, am I good, Lisa?
We have to contrast with Schneider.
One second. A motion and a second to approve the professional services agreement with Schneider as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried. About that.
And one other comment I have for you, Ryan, do you want us to sign the agreement from last week, or do you want to, do you have a different one for us?
The one, the one I sent you, let me confirm that you have the right date, on page one, letter A, one A, it should say January eleventh, does that look right?
I don't have the correct one, then.
Mine says, yeah, mine says January first.
Let me, I can, I thought I emailed to you, I'll, maybe I just, I forgot, I can email that to you right now. The reason why is because the one you have in front of you is probably expired December thirty-first, I'm going to assume. Yeah, so let me send you the updated one with the new expiration date.
All right, that sounds good. One other thing I noticed, and then this may already been fixed, but under the, the customized GIs consulting, you have forty-four written out, and then forty-eight in parentheses.
I do.
So, just.
Forty-four and forty-eight.
Yeah. And, and, and how many hours is, is written forty-four?
Type all.
Forty-eight, so.
I appreciate, Sarah, thank you. See, that's why we have, yeah, that's why we have attorneys. That's why I'm married to one.
It's all good.
That's what we're paying, Sarah.
Email that to me and we'll get it signed.
I will send you the correct hours, and it'll be, right, Sarah, thank you for pointing that out. All right, thanks, guys.
Very good.
Thanks, Ryan, have a good day.
Happy New Year.
We'll be in touch.
Mike, congratulations on getting reappointed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I heard you're the chairman.
He is.
Congratulations, Larry, nothing for you.
Yeah, he's vice chair.
Vice chair, oh, okay, it's all right, Larry.
I can't take a backseat now, I'm the back of the bus.
Just for your information, a lot of times I put this on when I'm in my office, and then I get answering, you know, doing something, and I don't always catch right away, so knocking on the walls is good. I was hearing Mike says, I don't hear knocking on the wall.
I mean, pay attention. Now, the old ones always had their ear against the wall, so.
Okay, I'm here anyway, so we'll talk to you tomorrow night.
Okay, all right, yeah, we will. Okay, hey, what'd you find out from Becky? Is she available sooner or later, or no? Let's check, let's take a short recess at this time, shall we, Lisa? Hey, with Betty Chapin, our human resource administrator. Administrator. Did I say Betty? I meant Becky.
This is last eight.
Yeah. Moving chairs next week.
Okay, I just have a couple of things under this portion. And the first thing is that for Iowa Code, section three thirty-one, nine oh three, the auditor, treasurer, recorder, sheriff, county attorney, may each appoint with approval of the board, one or more deputies, assistants, or clerks for whose acts the principal officer is responsible. When an appointment has been approved by the board, the principal officer making the appointment shall issue a written certificate of appointment. With the Office of County Auditor, new term starting January second, two thousand twenty-one, we now need to have certificates approved for the new term expiry, December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve the certificates of appointment, authorizing the chair to sign. Set appointments for the Office of County Auditor as follows. Shelley Hoy, first deputy, Mary Stickley, first deputy, and Danielle Bickford, administrative assistant. It is my understanding the sheriff will be prepared to have certificates presented next week.
I don't know, I think, I don't think we want any of them.
There's also revocation of appointment on the back.
I would make that motion.
I have moved approval. First deputies and administrative assistant for the auditor's office.
A motion and a second, authorizing the chair to sign set appointments for office staff, the county auditor, as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay?
Nay.
Aye.
Motion carried.
You guys are.
Twenty-one is funky twenty-one.
Funky twenty-one?
Yeah.
Oh, are you, okay, why don't, oh, you just haven't physically moved seats yet, but you didn't.
No. They give me authority to finish a meeting.
Shift chairs, gotcha.
That's the worst part, is moving all my stuff up. Oh, yeah. Not two.
Two sets of drawers.
Maybe I met.
To two.
Oh, rent one. Maybe I'll rent a drawer.
Maybe she, she has, maybe you can get one of those drawers back there, I would fill, I could fill one of them.
Um, the next thing I have is the position of a zoning administrator. We have wrapped up the application period in the interviews for the zoning administrator position, in which we had five applicants. During the process, we found it was a viable option to incorporate GIs services in with the zoning department. Due to this, it would be my recommendation that if you are prepared to make an offer and combine the two positions, the salary should be adjusted accordingly. Although I was not able to find any counties to get comparable salaries for the positions of zoning slash GIs, it would be my recommendation that we offer a starting salary of sixty-two thousand dollars for the combined services. If you are prepared to make an offer, I would ask for a motion to offer the position to the candidate of your choice at the starting salary of sixty-two thousand dollars.
I would move that we offer their contract to candidate A at sixty.
I have a motion and a second to offer the position to candidate A with a starting salary of sixty-two thousand dollars. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
And you would negotiate the starting date?
Yes, I will make contact as soon as I leave the office here, and we did take a look at the GIs job description for the holiday. I think between Lisa, Buck, and I, we will kind of cut and paste some of the main functions of GIs into the zoning description to come up with one document.
Well.
And we did, we did just have a conversation with Ryan from Schneider, and we asked about training hours and stuff, if we needed more than what we've booked for, through the end of March, that there would be additional hours would be available, so we just need to see what, what more she might need, or candidate might need.
We certainly need to know what time, what time restrictions, or what commitments it'll take for, to keep us moving forward anyway, you know. If we need to contract for more in the short term, sounds logical to me, but, yeah. I think it's a hell, a real positive to have somebody with background and, and have that.
Yeah, we need a professional to train us, because we really don't have that person in the courthouse.
Right.
To do, I mean.
And I think the way it sounded like, after the March thirty-first, then if we want additional hours, I would think we could do that month by month.
I would hope.
I would hope so, too.
Yeah, I think we'd have a good feeling by then, what direction we need to go, yes, on tentative starting, all that.
Yeah, we need somebody to get established.
They have them on board so that they can get things caught up.
Yeah.
As, as best they can.
Yeah, right, definitely. So I'll make contact and let you.
We know you guys have been following up with what needed to be, but, yeah, I mean, we got, yeah, well, you know, we got somebody coming in with a background that has some good background, the way it sounds, and have on both positions, anyway.
And I would say, just as a side note, that the relationship that we've been having with ECIA, and specifically Laura Carson's, is our contact person, it's been very positive. We are getting some work done, it's not like we're ignoring anybody, things are getting done, I see, I've got two emails already this morning from her, so things are progressing, it's, we haven't just let it sit here for a month, we are still working with.
And I think they would be willing to
Yep.
work with her too, as she, as the
Yeah.
new person gets on board.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you'll keep us posted on?
I will.
Yep.
Yep.
Starting dates and
Yep.
timeframes and what are, what the constraints are, okay.
Yep, we'll get it all looked out.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, so you didn't, you didn't have anything for general relief, you just said, okay.
Yeah, that was it.
That was, oh, I forgot that you are a general relief administrator. Get an extra bonus, no extra bonus for that. Change heads.
Oh, thank you, okay, great. So, yeah, I think that was all I have for this portion.
I think that's wonderful news.
Yeah, positivity.
Yep, yeah.
All right. Did we say happy new year, happy new year? We hope that two thousand twenty-one brings us a happy new year.
Twenty-one can be a little easier for you.
I think, yeah, it will, you know, I'm excited, I am excited for what is to come for Jackson County, I'm excited to have, you know, a new person here to work with, and hopefully, we'll get somebody in here soon, based on the acceptance and that kind of stuff, and it's, it's a good opportunity, so.
Good enough.
And have we decided where their office will be?
I know what my preference is.
Well, let's see if, let's see if we have a warm body first.
Yep.
Well, we have four other choices, if this warm body doesn't take it, we can at least.
Yeah.
Sure, discussion to be had, what's your best
Yeah.
position or place, and you?
Yeah, we have a little work to be done yet, as far as getting some cleanup done.
It does details.
Yeah, we've got, yeah, we need to dot the i and cross the t's, and that's, we're gonna, we've got some time, depending on if our warm body accepts or not. If not, then we'll find another one.
So we'll hope to find out some.
Yeah. I'll let you know.
Okay. Thanks, Maggie. Have a good day.
Yep.
Three months, year. Okay, any other, we have work sessions scheduled yet for today, so we have Becky, we have you scheduled yet, are you ready at some point?
Well, I'm actually not, so I'm wondering if at ten twenty, maybe David would like to go.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Okay.
Either that, or we're supposed to maybe try to set up an appointment with Brent. They have a special meeting this week to discuss a couple of things.
Yes.
Maybe we could do it after that. We don't know, he's gonna let Luann or Lisa or somebody know when that, when he wants to have that.
We, we may just schedule a work session, budget work sessions anyway, to, so we have it on the agenda, so we can discuss anything we need to discuss.
And I would anticipate my bottom line, China, I'll be honest, I haven't put any, anything into it. I just, it's been a crazy month, and it's just, so, it was on my first thing to do this morning, and it still hasn't happened, so. It's just a discussion, just kind of what the money needs to be allocated, I need to, there's a David Lucas, since he's on board, about some training requirements and that kind of stuff, but I wouldn't anticipate the bottom line changing, it's just figuring out where the money needs to go with him. And with COVID and general assistance, there's so many other programs out there right now, and with the moratoriums, there's no bills to be paid, so to speak, so that's just kind of gonna be a tough one for next year, anyway, so, just some of those things that we need.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
All right, are there any other unfinished business or new business before the board this morning? If not, can we adjourn and still do our, we can still do our budget sessions?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you all, and happy new year.
We, we're supposed to have a workforce board, maybe.